Good evening, everyone. We're just gonna give folks another minute to join us and then we will get started. In the meantime, I am going to put the sign in form for tonight's meeting in the chat. We ask that everyone, both staff and our guests, please complete the sign in form for tonight. And if you're one of our parent guardians attending tonight, um, we will use that form to pick winners for items from our school store. So please make sure you complete that form. All right, we are recording and we have a packed agenda for the evening, so I'm gonna go ahead and get us started. My name is Sarah Stell and I am the Director of Communications here at Insight PA. It is my great privilege and honor to welcome you to our first community town hall of the 25-26 school year. This evening, you are going to hear from Beth Jones, our COO, Tara McFalls, our Director of Continuous Improvement, Jalisa Epps, our Assistant Director of Reporting and Compliance, and Ron Shipman, our Director of Educational Software and Systems. If you have not joined one of our town halls previously, we will go through our agenda and we welcome questions or comments about the topics in this evening's agenda. If you have questions about other things, uh, we will not be addressing them this evening, but we can take note of them and someone can get back to you, um, either tomorrow or next week. After each part of the agenda, we will, uh, open it up to questions. You can raise your hand, uh, using the Zoom raise hand feature, or you can type your questions into the chat. We will be monitoring that as well. So with all that said, I am going to hand it over to Beth Jones, our COO.
Thanks, Sarah. Uh, good evening, everyone. I'd like to start off by just introducing everyone, um, to our Board of Trustees. Our Board of Trustees is the governing body of our school. Um, and so they are led by Lowell Thomas, who is an attorney by trade. Bill Ferrera supports Lowell. Bill comes out of a long history in public education administration. Um, Ed Knittle serves as our treasurer and he has municipal governance experience. Darleada is our newest board member and she has a extensive background in community engagement and social work. Alice Solomon remains on our board and served as a past president. Alice has decades of business development experience as, and also as a social worker. And Tamara Campbell, uh, serves on our board as our parent representative. She is a parent of a, uh, at least one graduate of Insight PA students, maybe two, kind of forgetting how old her children are at this point, um, and she still definitely has at least two other children here enrolled in our school. So our boards, our board meets monthly on the last Tuesday evening of every month, and then they hold committee meetings, uh, the week before that. Those meetings are public. The links are shared via, uh, Ms. Sarah Stell's newsletters that go out to families and parents square, and they welcome family participation in those committee and board meetings. Moving on to the, the next slide, thanks, Sarah. Uh, I just wanted to share with everyone, um, what the overarching goals are for Insight PA. So you can see right in the middle, we have one strategic priority. It's pretty encompassing though, uh, and that is to create a healthy ecosystem in our school organization to support our student and students and their growth. And we have two sides to that. We have our board priorities and what they are focused on, and then our school goals, which align with both the strategic priority and our board priorities. So our board, as you can imagine, being a governance body, is interested in ensuring academic excellence, making sure we are financially stable and well-positioned organization. They are very interested in our career readiness, um, and CTE programs, um, and also in school belonging and connection. We, we have a, a deep dedication to community engagement with our students and families and, uh, working to make sure that every student feels that they belong here at Insight PA. And how are we gonna achieve that? That's through our school goals. We are working towards a success in our quarterly comprehensive school improvement goals. We're working to build and maintain a positive school culture for our employees, as well as for our students and families. And then as we have moved away from Stride K-12, our previous management company, we are working, continuing to work to build strong operational and systems foundation to support that independence from Stride K-12. So that's an overview of, uh, sort of the high level of what our, our leadership teams and our educators are working on for this school year. And please, parents know that at the heart of all of our priorities and goals and our efforts are the students that you entrust to us and also providing, uh, services that your family can benefit from as well. So thank you very much, Sarah. You can move to the next slide.
Thank you, Beth. Uh, we are going to move on to our comprehensive support and improvement plan overview, presented by Tara McFalls, our Director of Continuous Improvement. And before I hand the mic to her, just a reminder, I am putting the sign in form for tonight's meeting in the chat. So please make sure you are, uh, clicking on that link and completing that form, uh, this evening. All right. Thank you, Tara.
Thanks, Sarah, and good evening, everybody. I hope you're all having a great evening and thank you so much for joining us. So what I'm gonna talk about today is our CSI, and as Sarah mentioned, our comprehensive support and improvement plan. I wanted to start with a quote, uh, from William Butler Yeats that says, "Education is not the filling of a pail, but the lighting of a fire." The reason I put that in here is because everybody here at Insight really hopes to spark and ignite that spark in your students to want to continue to learn and be curious and wonder about the world around them. So we're always in, very, very happy to give that spark to all your students. That's our main passion. So we can go to the next slide. Um, the title of this is Working Together for Student Success, because that's exactly what we're doing. Everyone here, as well as working with you, the families, to make sure that your students are successful. In alignment with the Every Student Succeeds Act, which is ESSA, ESSA, Insight was designated two years ago as a comprehensive support and improvement school by the Pennsylvania Department of Education. And what that means is that we were identified this school based on three metrics. One, achievement, and this was the percentage of students that were scoring proficient or advanced on state assessments in English, language arts, and math. Also on growth, that's our academic growth is measured by the PA Value Added Assessment Systems, or PVS, and also our high school graduation rate. After receiving this designation, we knew that our goal was to make sure that every one of our students thrives, not only academically, but socially and emotionally. And so we continue to focus on equity, outcomes, and opportunity. One of the things I'm very excited to say is that we have been taken off of one of the criteria for CSI, which is high school graduation rate. You're placed on that, um, criteria if you do not meet the 67% graduation rate. But as of actually today, um, our Director of Compliance let us know that it looks like for 24-25, we have 75.7% graduation rate, which would take us above that threshold, and that's extremely exciting. So very happy to report that. Uh, our CSI Plan priorities, in close relationship with you as the families, as well as our teachers and students and other school leaders, we work with our school improvement facilitators. Um, they're from the Chester County Intermediate Unit, Kim Rank and Maria Stauffer. They work with us and as a result of that, they helped us strategize and create these priorities for our CSI plan. Those priorities include increasing student mastery of grade level standards in ELA, as well as in math, increasing that four-year graduation rate, which we've done, a greater proficiency in our instructional practices, implementation of a very effective multi-tiered system of supports for students called MTSS, and increasing our student daily attendance. In order to meet those priorities, um, we also developed an even broader comprehensive plan, the 25-28 CSI Comprehensive Plan. This was approved by our Board of Trustees, who you were just introduced to, that was approved on September 30th. And as part of the standard process, it's now under review by the Pennsylvania Department of Education. Just want everybody to know that that plan strengthens our instructional pressed practices, our intervention systems, and our career pathways for students. The plan focuses on building our collaboration between staff, students, and families such as yourself as we grow stronger. So in order to meet those priorities and to meet the goals that we've set aside for the school, we're growing and improving through four CSI strategies. These are the key strategies we're using to support our growth. The first one is student-centered coaching model, and I'm gonna get into it in further slides, a little more detail each strategy. But this helps us coach teachers to make sure we're positively impacting student learning. Team-initiated problem solving, and we use data-driven teams to identify any barriers and as well as identify solutions that helps to strengthen our MTSS system and interventions. Learner Essentials and Attendance Partnership Program. This increases student attendance, engagement, and that deep sense of belonging here in our community. And a new strategy this year entitled Linked Learning. And this is where we're connecting academics with career pathways so that we're preparing students, not only for college, but their careers and beyond. These four strategies, we're very proud to say, they work together to make our learning much more responsive, relevant, and very relational. So we'll dig into our first strategy, which is the Student Centered Coaching Model. This is an evidence-based program that focuses on student learning and outcomes. So classroom teachers are specifically coached in creating lessons that are aligned not only with state standards, but are also differentiated for the students in their classes so that they meet students where they are and their specific needs. This year, we're shifting from teacher-focused to student-focused even more so, so we ensure the professional development directly impacts student learning incomes, outcomes, excuse me, and also helps to differentiate to meet the students' learning styles. In doing this, we have instructional coaches that partner with our teachers using student evidence. They look at student work samples, their formative assessments, and their growth measures to make sure that they're coaching the teachers appropriately to support that growth. There's collaborative planning and feedback side cycles that are focused on those specific student goals. And we have a coaching document that actually makes sure we're monitoring those instructional shifts and ensuring that we're adequately approaching implementation and growth for our students and teachers. Our next strategy, Team Initiated Problem Solving, it's called TIPS. And this TIPS approach is a team approach or framework that identifies barriers to learning. All the team members are empowered to identify barriers and initiate those steps to reduce them, and they partner with students and families to ensure the highest levels of achievement. So like I said, we're focusing very much on data-driven problem solving, and we follow a cycle of if we see a problem, we analyze the data, we develop solutions, we implement, and then we reflect and evaluate. During our grade band meetings where we meet with grade band leadership, elementary, middle, and high school, we work through any of those issues, talking specifically about students and how to support them and support the MTSS programs and interventions, which are evidence-based, to help students make up some skill gaps. Next strategy, the LEAP Program. This provides a variety of supports and consistent points of contact for students and families. So working directly to increase that engagement and attendance and also identify some local community resources when necessary. Uh, it's really exciting this year that we're launching the Check and Connect Program. This is a wonderful mentoring program, and we have our LEAP specialists that are gonna be working with students grades six through 12 and elementary school counselors, grades K through two. They're gonna serve as mentors to help build relationships and reduce barriers that may have come up for student attendance and engagement. In addition to that Check and Connect Program, the LEAP Program and its members will continue to review 10-day consecutive absences and identify chronic absenteeism, conduct home visits and outreach in order to connect deeply with our families and provide supports, and then also outline some specific attendance interventions when we do have MTSS meetings with our students, staff, and families. And our last program, uh, I'm sorry, there we go. Our last one is, uh, Linked Learning. Linked Learning is an educational approach that actually combines the work that we're doing with our career and education work benchmarks into our core classes. So within the context of career education and work standards, which are Pennsylvania standards to prepare students with knowledge and skills for their career readiness, we combine that with our competencies of students' day-to-day learning in their core classes. Students have the opportunity to enroll in pathways like health sciences, IT pathway, business, digital technology, arts, media, and entertainment, and education. And we also blend those core academics, not only with the CTE work, but opportunities for work-based learning. Uh, this emphasizes performance-based assessments and all those industry connections to help students try to advance what they're going to do after school and get some real experiential learning, which is exciting. So in addition to having those wonderful strategies that we're using to help our students advance, we have some primary goals this year that are based on our CSI plan. I wanna highlight that our goals are not just about numbers, okay? They're about reaching every student and making sure that every student feels seen, supported, and becomes successful. So our overarching content of our goals are in academic growth, student engagement, equity and access, and career readiness. So I'll review those goals now. We have academic growth goals. The first goal is in elementary, language arts, English and language arts. So by the end of this year, we would like 30% of third graders to score average or above average on the AIMS Web Oral Reading Fluency and Comprehension subtests. AIMS Web Plus is actually a screener that we use and a diagnostic measure that students actually take this test early in the year and in the fall, the first or two, um, one or two weeks of their orientation. And this helps us get an understanding of where they stand in their ability in English and in math. And so for this particular population, we would like to see this increase with upper average or above average on oral reading fluency and comprehension. In math, K through eight, by the end of this year, we would like 30% of students to earn 50% or more points on open-ended items on the Math PSSA, which is a standardized assessment. And in algebra, by the end of this year, we want at least 8% of the first-time test takers to score proficient or advanced on the Algebra I Keystone Exam. And all of the strategies that we talked about are gonna help students get to that and earn those goals. In terms of our attendance goals, by the end of 25-26, we'd like to see 50% of students attend 90% or more of their instructional days. We have a goal for career education and work, which is to increase that compliance of submitting the artifacts they need from 89% to 91% by the end of the school year. And through improved monitoring, student follow-up, and structured evidence collection cycles, we hope to reach that goal. And finally, for MTSS, by June 30th, the end of the year, 2026, at least 60% of students receiving Tier Two or Tier Three support, these are intensive, targeted supports for students, will be on track on at least one of their following areas: academic progress, attendance, or SCL and functional behavior, which is engagement in the classroom. And this will be measured through consistent and documented progress monitoring. So we went through all of these great goals and all of these wonderful strategies that we're using to really elevate and advance student progress and success. But more importantly, how can you as families partner with us for this project, progress? So first, encouraging your students to attend and fully engage in their classes, staying connected with teachers and staff, participate in school events that we have our engagement opportunities and feedback opportunities, and always share your insights. Uh, I do see a hand up. Um, Piper, would you like to share? Is there a question?
Yes, that last slide that you did about the, uh, AIMS Web and stuff, is way ground included with that stuff or no?
I believe that's different and part of one of our curriculum programs. Um, we do have our Director of Assessment here, Tony Grande, I believe that is part of, or Ron, I believe that's part of our, uh, curriculum.
Yes, just to confirm, yes, that, uh, way ground is separate from the AIMS Web Plus. That's a great question. But yeah, that, they're two, um, they're used differently. Yep, great question, though.
Thanks, Tony. And yeah, great question. Thank you. So again, we have different methods for you to partner with us for this progress. Uh, one of them is to ask such great questions and to inquire about what's going on in the classroom. Okay, next slide. All right, so looking ahead, if we're sustaining growth together. So we're obviously doing this as a team here at Insight, but also with you. Just a reminder that CSI is a continuous improvement process. We're constantly growing and we follow that cycle of improvement where we set goals, we watch those goals while we're implementing, we analyze how we're doing, we evaluate, we reflect, and we adapt as necessary. We held data meetings after each quarter, and that informs our next steps and helps us to pivot if we need to and remain flexible to make sure that we're doing everything we can to support your students. And of course, as I said in the beginning, our shared commitment keeps that fire of learning strong to make sure that we're supporting that and continuing that goal of getting students excited about their learning and feeling really productive and fulfilled in the work that they do. We really appreciate sincerely you all being an essential part of Insight PA's growth story. So together, we're lighting the path for student success. And as we move forward, every improvement we make, no matter how small, contributes to a stronger and a very much more inclusive school community. So I really appreciate your time tonight. Um, any questions? I can also monitor the chat. But thank you so much in working together with us to improve student success and our school's support.
Uh, thank you, Tara, so much for providing that update with all of us. If anybody does have questions about the, the comprehensive plan, um, you can raise your hand at this time, or you can put it in the chat, and we will continue to monitor that. Um, I am going to hand it over to Jalisa Epps to talk to us about Title Programs, Funding, and Parent and Family Engagement. Oh, and I see a hand raised. So Jalisa, while you're getting ready, um, uh, Latonya, do you have a question?
Hi, good afternoon. I'm sorry, good, good evening. Too much going on today. Um, I did have some questions. Because, uh, in terms of the, um, proficiency and the attendance goals, so, um, in terms of some of the barriers, uh, with the absenteeism, is, um, there's some data that we could see online to, you know, for us parents to get an idea of what that looks like. It may not necessarily be for my child, but in terms of, uh, a possibility of partnering with those families in those specific areas, for example, if, um, there's someone in that immediate area where that child lives, if, uh, there could be some type of bridge in place so that other families could possibly support that family that may be struggling with that absenteeism. That was one question. And, uh, for the attendance goals, and in terms of, um, the support, you were talking about the Tier Two support and the Tier Three engagement. Can you give a little more insight in terms of what that looks like? Or is that more or less for, uh, supports for whether it's, uh, maybe special education or something along that lines? And is that Tier Three also part of that engagement that you were speaking of? Those were just some of my questions.
Uh, those are fantastic questions. I'll be glad to take the first one, and then I'll let, uh, Tony Grande, a Director of Assessment Evaluation, take the second. Uh, so for the first one, in terms of attendance, in terms of the data, uh, we actually have an upcoming quarterly CSI meeting that is open to families, and we can absolutely welcome you to that meeting, which we will be sharing very specific data about attendance. But in terms of those supports and supporting families in the area, we do have LEAP specialists. So as part of that LEAP team, um, they actually go out and provide supports to those families. And the Check and Connect Program is specifically designed. So for those that are demonstrating chronic absenteeism or have a lower GPA, we're actually mentoring them. So we'll be developing that tight-knit relationship, and that relationship can be garnered not only virtually, but also in person. So if they'd like that deeper connection, we can go out to that community and work with that student. And the LEAP specialists will be doing that, as well as the elementary school counselors. But we do have that LEAP program, where LEAP specialists and our student resource specialists are working closely with families in the community, going and doing home visits if necessary, and connecting them with community supports. But I love your idea of outreach, and so I can let our Director of Student Services know that, and we could certainly partner with you, absolutely, um, to work on these things further. But I also will just mention that we will have that quarterly data meeting on November 13th if you would, you would like to attend and receive a little more specific data around attendance.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you again for that question. I'll pass it to Tony for the second part of your question.
Yeah, I have to second that. That is, uh, there are two excellent questions in there and lots of discussions, so I love it. So I'll, I'll put a plug in for next month as well for our next town hall meeting, because, uh, Sarah Stell, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe I'm doing at November's a full breakdown of MTSS and our tiered model. So this will be kind of a, a preview of a lot of those conversations, but I love the question. Um, so when, uh, viewing our tiered model of supports, we basically have three, what we call components that we focus on. So we focus on academics, um, social, emotional learning, and functional behavior. And then, uh, the third is attendance. So, um, they, this lives outside of special education, let's say. So like, if you view, like, we kinda like to view instruction here on a continuum, some level of needs, and we're providing support. So a student doesn't have to be identified, uh, with, uh, special education needs or have an IEP to access any of these. So at the beginning of the year, essentially how it works for the academic end is, um, we send out information to all families, uh, about, uh, the screeners that we'll be completing. So for, uh, elementary, it's AIMS Web Plus. For, uh, six through 12, it's Exact Path. Um, and then they complete that data, and then we take that data in with, uh, with other academic data that we have on hand, and we are able to create a tiered model of support. So the students throughout their day are able to go to their core content courses, get that high-quality instruction, and then we have intervention sessions or what we call a what I need time or win time built in throughout the day. So students are kind of always going to like, either build areas of, you know, continuing to support with content in the classroom, in the curricula, or build upon, uh, academic skills based upon tiering, uh, intervention, uh, interventions in two and three. Uh, the interventionists also reach out to all, uh, families, uh, once they're in their class, introduce themselves and make sure to make themselves available for any questions, comments, concerns about their child in the class. But those are all designated based upon those screeners and other information we collect at the beginning of the year. And then we track to see how the support with those interventions is going. And then kind of going back to that cycle, I like to think of it as basically three steps. We identify needs for students, we intervene for those students, and then we inspect to see how everything's going. And that's the real progress monitoring. Um, and then at that point, teams come together and talk about, do we need to, you know, uh, keep a student where they are? Are they progressing? Can they move down a tier, back into Tier One? Maybe move up into Tier Three, and we like to involve parents in each of those, uh, steps of the way. So I can talk about this, and I usually say nerd out on a lot of this information for a long time, but I hope was that, uh, helpful to your initial question. I don't wanna go too far without making sure at least I'm addressing your original question.
Absolutely. I just wanted to ask a few questions, and you've answered everything perfectly. Thank you so much.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for the wonderful questions. And again, November, good plug. If you wanna see, learn more about it, I will be doing a presentation there.
Okay, Jalisa, I think we are good to, all right.
All right, let me minimize this. All right, good evening, everyone. My name is Jalisa Epps, and I am the Assistant Director of Reporting and Compliance for Insight. Tonight, we will be going over a few of the federal grants we've received, really focusing on Title One, Two, Three, and Four. So today, we're gonna just clarify the purpose of Title One. We're gonna discuss our title goals, talk about how we break down our achievement data to help us decide how to use our title funds. We're going to discuss the Parent and Family Engagement Policy, the School Compact, uh, the various parent and family workshops we're offering this year, go over the rights of our parents and our families that they have under ESSA, and how we're gonna spend our title funds, our IDEA funds, and our school improvement grant funds. Then at the end, we'll give you guys a few minutes to ask any questions you might have, or you can just go ahead and type your questions in the chat box, and someone will answer it. So each year, our school applies for and receives federal funding to supplement the educational program we already have in place. One of the sources of our federal funding is Title One. So Title One is a federal program that provides financial assistance to schools so that they can provide additional academic supports and learning opportunities for their students. Schools that qualify for Title One-wide programs, school-wide programs, have a high percentage of economically disadvantaged students. The intent is to close that achievement gap and ensure that economically disadvantaged students have the same opportunities as any other student at any other school to meet or exceed the state academic standards. The federal government has a few different title grants they distribute to schools, but we only apply for and participate in Title I-A, Title II, Title III, and Title IV. So we know that Title One is intended to So we know that Title One is intended to close that achievement gap for students. And then Title Two is for preparing, training, and recruiting high quality teachers and principals. Title Three helps us support our English learners and our immigrant students. And then Title Four is for student support and academic enrichment. And that helps us provide our students with access to a well-rounded education and, and then also to improve school conditions for student learning. So the overall goal is to increase academic achievement. The Title One grant really helps us with that goal because it allows us to focus on direct instructional supports to provide professional development for our teachers and also to promote parent and family engagement and educational opportunities for our families. Reviewing and analyzing school achievement data is the main way we determine which areas we need to focus on when it comes to those additional supports that we need for our students. So when we apply for the grants, we always look at the achievement data to see where we need to put the money. So we analyze our PSSA, Keystone and Benchmark Assessment results to determine academic growth and see where we need to improve. Then we use that assessment data to see if it aligns with our academic program and the state academic standards. Then we adjust our instructional practices based on whatever we find during that data analysis. But then we also consider the feedback given to us from our families and from the staff that complete that needs assessment survey. So all of those data points is what helps us make informed decisions when it comes to prioritizing the grants. And when it comes to prioritizing the needs of our students and our families, and it helps us build out the entire layout for our federal programs. So parent and family engagement is very important for student success because it really helps student behavior and it also helps them perform better in the classroom. So we do want to encourage all of our families to read the current district parent and family engagement policy and give us some feedback or any suggestions for any changes that, that you all would like to see. Last year, we did develop a school-level parent and family engagement policy. And that was as a direct result of a needs assessment survey that we send out to our families asking what changes you guys wanted to see in the policy. So we did develop a school-level policy which is really set up like a Q and A. It's a pretty easy read. And then it's also available on our website and sent out to you guys each month in your, your monthly newsletter. So each family should have received our parent and family compact prior to the start of the school year. The compact is a collective agreement saying that we share responsibility for your students' achievement. The compact outlines the commitments for the school, the students, and the commitments for the families. So some of our insights at Insight is to, some of the commitments that we have is to provide a high-quality educational program that supports students in their learning environments and to maintain ongoing communication with the families. Families are committing to making sure their students are completing assignments on time and attending school every day. And then the students are committing to showing up to school every day, to having a positive attitude and putting forth their best efforts. You can also review the entire policy in the compact in the school-wide newsletter under the Focus on Federal Programs section. So during the school year, the Student Support Services team will offer workshops and events geared towards parents and families. Some topics they will discuss are mental health, schoology, or understanding state assessments. But this is only a few of the workshops we're offering this year. But again, if there is another sort of workshop that you guys would like to see, feel free to reach out to me or to one of your school leaders and we will do our best to facilitate the workshop just as long as it falls within the school's criteria for workshops. So Title One is very intentional about addressing parent and family rights. Parents and families have the right to ask for meetings or trainings, the right to review our achievement data, review and modify the Title One Parent and Family Engagement Policy or the School Compact, to review the parent involvement plan within the school's comp plan, or to review the results of our annual parent engagement survey. Okay, now we're going to get into our grant funds and how we're, we're going to allocate those funds this year. So the amount of Title One funding we get depends on the number of students enrolled in our school on October first that will qualify for free or reduced lunch. We use that information that families give us on the family income form to help us determine whether or not students would qualify for free or reduced lunch. So any school who has over forty percent of the student population who would be eligible for free or reduced lunch are eligible to participate in a school-wide title program. Since we do have over forty percent of students that would be eligible for their free or reduced lunch, we are considered a school-wide title program. That designation allows us to service all of our students under Title One regardless of their economic status. So as of today, our Title One allocation is about $2 million. Those funds are being used on programs like Unique and Conover for salaries and partial benefits for some interventionist, for parent and family engagement opportunities, for our MKV set aside, which is exclusively for our homeless population of students. And then for salaries and partial benefits for some of our LEAP specialist. And then for Title Two, we receive about $134,000. We are using those funds for salaries and partial benefits for some of our instructional coaches. And then for Title Three, we receive about $21,000. Those funds are being used for a program called NARPOD ELL for Awita Conference to provide some professional development, for a foundational reading program called Ufly, and then for Flashlight. Title Four is broken down into three different components. We have safe and healthy students, a well-rounded education, and the effective use of technology. So for Title Four, we receive about $150,000. And we focus on a safe and healthy student component by providing our school community a safe and supportive environment for learning, for physical health, for mental health, and for any other activity that will give our students access to a safe and healthy educational experience. So these are all the things we're, we're using those funds on. We focus on a well-rounded education by offering students courses and activities that give them access to an enriched educational experience. So at Insight, a well-rounded education is about providing ways to help our students grow and exposing them to new experiences. So we're offering different things like certification in cosmetology, which I'm super excited about this year. Certification in business, and the list goes on. We send some of our students to an FBLA conference every year. We, we let our students participate in the Carnegie Mellon Robotics, and we also give them career cards. We focus on the effective use of technology by ensuring we are promoting digital literacy for our students. So we do this by, by sending some of our staff, the technology staff to a conference to learn about all of the new and innovative things involving technology so that they can come back and update the teachers who teach the students and support them with all of their technology needs. We also receive funding from the IDEA grant, which focuses on the needs of our special education students. The Individuals with Disabilities Education Act is a law that makes free public education available to children with disabilities throughout the entire nation. And it also helps make sure those children get special education services and any other related service they might need. We received about $744,000 in IDEA funds. We're using those funds for behavior interventionists, special education transition coordinators, special education compliance coordinators, life skills teachers, and special education teachers. So as Tara was, was, was speaking about earlier, we are designated as a CSI school. And along with that designation comes additional funding, which brings us to the School Improvement Grant. This grant helps us provide resources to ultimately help our students raise their grades and to gain a better understanding of the material they're learning. So we received about $212,000 in the School Improvement Grant. We're using those funds on a professional development series, on salary and partial benefits for student resource specialists, and for salary and partial benefits for an instructional coach. So as I stated earlier, we encourage all of our parents and families and stakeholders to get involved in our school planning. But if there are any grant-specific follow-up questions or concerns, please feel free to reach out to either myself, the Assistant Director of Reporting and Compliance, or you can read out to Ms. Johanna Best, which is our Director of Reporting and Compliance. Thank you, Sarah. That was all I had for you guys tonight.
Thank you, Jalisa. We are going to hear from Ron Shipman next. So as he gets ready, just giving time for any questions that anyone might have for Jalisa. Feel free to use the chat or raise your hand. And then once Ron gets started, anyone who joined us during the meeting, I am going to put the link for the signup form in the chat again. Please make sure you do complete that before the end of the meeting tonight. Ron, you are good to go, I think.
All right. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I'm sharing my screen. Can everyone see my screen? Give me thumbs up. Perfect. I love it. Thank you so much. So as Sarah Stell, I'll let you know, I'm Director of Educational Software and Systems. And I want to talk to you guys about our education software updates that we have this year, which I'm very excited for, for you guys to see, as well as some things that you'll see that is brand new. So first off, let me click it. So first off, we have a transition where we are moving and we already have moved away from using one Google domain, which was ISBA cyber.net. And we have moved into Insight PA School, which you kind of see right here. Hopefully you can see where I'm circling. And we are transitioning some of the software that we're using so that way we can sunset. And one of those is Google Drive, where students will not be able to get access to the old Google Drive. Again, I'm only talking about the ISBA cyber that we used last year. This year, students already have access. They're already in, they're already logged in and getting access and getting all the resources. This is just the old account that we used prior. So we are going to be sunsetting that account for Google Drive as well as any students that had content inside of Canva. So we are doing a training for this, or really just an office hours, that if your student had anything, materials in Google Drive, or any materials in Canva in the ISBA cyber account, we will help them transition any content that they created or documents over to their new account. If they don't need to do anything, they don't have any information or content built in any of that, they do not need to attend. This is not a mandatory. But it's just that if they have it, we will be available on Halloween from 10:00 AM to 11:00 AM. And then link right here so that way we can work with the students during that day. Next, we have a family support page for you guys. So you're having trouble, you're having issues, your, your child is having trouble or issues. We have a page right here. And as you can see, even the page is, is working on its own for you guys. So we added this in here just to kind of show you the guide. We created the family tech support page. It is amazing. Our family support team is amazing and loves working with you guys, working with our students. And we created this page. It has how-to videos. It has help desk information. It has setup information. We're going to be adding more information about access for applications over time. But we have this and we created this for you. So this page, our family support tech page is right on our hub. You can click on the families and go right to it. And you can navigate and look through everything at your own. And this slide will be available for you eventually. So that way you can look through and go back again. But we made this for you guys. We know that you guys needed some support. We're creating it and we're going to continue to build and help and support you guys as much as possible. Let's keep it moving. More for you. If you have not created an account in Parent Square, we really encourage you to create an account in Parent Square. This is our communication tool that everyone in our school is using and sending messages and posts and direct messages and help out. We even use this for support. If we're working with your child or working with you regarding any access or they're having trouble, we may send you a message via Parent Square. So we want you, we need you to be a part of our Parent Square community and create an account. Also, this will allow you to receive and get access and open up securely to the report cards. We will be sending out our report cards very similar to last year via Parent Square via secure documents. We want to make sure that it's secure and only you have access to this document. So you would have to be a registered member of Parent Square to get access to the report card. And then we have videos for you. Yes, we created videos for you to walk through the registration. We created videos to walk you through how to access the report cards. This is for you. Use it. All right. Definitely. We need you as part of Parent Square community. Oh, I'm loving the hearts. I love that. Let me see some more. Well, that's not all. We got more for you. We have Parent, Parent Portal, which is part of our Power School Network. You guys have been asking, how can I get more information about access to what's going on with attendance? What's going on with grades? Now you have it. It is at your control. You get access to it right away. We created accounts for everyone who has access, has the right to for their student records. You're able to see the grades, see attendance, and receive live notifications. You will get the notifications. Every time there's an attendance change, you're going to get a notification. Every time there is a grade change, you're going to get a notification. And I even see a parent out there shaking his head because you're getting a lot of notifications. You can cut that down a little bit and we do have a guide for you to walk through that. So with this, you guys get in, you get your email, username and password. We will send you your account. You change the password, you have access, you have control. If you need help, well, we're here. Right here, we have the IT support, not only for students. Students have a direct way of getting into our help desk, which we're going to talk about in a sec. And for you guys, if you're having questions related to IT, you can send an email and we will work with you. So we have a lot of great things that we built for you guys to bring you into our environment to get the information you need right at your fingertips right away. So if you want to learn more about Parent Portal, well, I'm going to go plug myself, taking this from Tony. Right here down at the bottom, this is where you click to view our Parent Portal slides. It will walk you through everything with Parent Portal, walk you through every page, how to get access and everything from there. And if you need some help, we will probably be back next month as well. So make sure you come on back so we can talk some more about that. But wait, there's more. This right here is just a breakdown to give you a little bit of help. And you can see as we have the video showing of how it is, how is it a lot easier now for students to submit help desk tickets. We have a guide for you guys within our family support page to walk you through it, also take you right there. Or if you need to send an email to put in a help desk ticket, we have it right here. These slides will be available to you. If you guys need some more trainings, definitely, please reach out to Jalisa and the team so that way we can add some more additional trainings for you guys. Come on back. We have a lot of great stuff for you and for you and the family. And this is a plug again for the Family Tech Support Page. So again, we're going to point you back here because it is a great resource that we created this year and it is for you. And Stella, I think that is all I have and I will stop sharing at that point.
Thank you, Mr. Shipman. You are definitely a tough act to follow. Does anybody have any questions related to our education system, software, online platforms, tech support? Before I share just two more pieces of information and bring this first town hall to a close.
Yeah, I have a question. Jalisa, I have sent you a direct message. That's all.
Okay, I'll look at it right now.
All right. So just two more slides for the evening. And just confirmation that that still looks good in full screen mode. Excellent. All right. So two quick community engagement updates. This is a reminder, if you did not see it in our newsletter this week, we have created an Insight PA Family Connection Facebook group. So those of you who have been here for a few years may remember the old Learning Coach community from when we were still working with Stride K-12. This is our replacement for that so that you have a way to connect with other Insight PA families. This group is a private group. It is open. This group is a private group. It is open to all current Insight PA parents and legal guardians. The link to join the group is here on this slide. It's also in the newsletter that went out this week. If you missed that newsletter, you can go right to our website, insightpa school.org, go to the newsletters page and get to the October newsletter right from there. Um, we will ask you to answer a few simple questions so that we can confirm your identity, just your first and last name and the email address that you have on file with the school. Uh, this group is managed by our official Insight PA Facebook group, uh, page, which our digital content specialist and myself manage, um, but the group is really for you. We're there to admit members into the group. We're there to help you, um, if you need someone from the school uh, and you're trying to get ahold of someone, but we created this so that you could connect with each other, schedule meetups with other folks in your area, maybe get help carpooling to some of our events. Um, or if you just need some advice and, and want to connect with another family who, uh, is in a similar situation and doing online school with Insight PA. So definitely check that out. We are admitting people, uh, as they request to join the group. And then just a reminder that, um, another plug for Parents Square, we are sharing all information about our events through Parents Square this year, um, instead of our public-facing calendar on the website. We're doing that for security. We're doing that for safety. We're also doing that for, um, just ease and trying to streamline things as much as possible so that you really have one main place to go and look for the information. Signups are also being done right in Parents Square. Um, the forums connect automatically to your student information. That's already in our system. Um, but if you have any questions, uh, you can always reach out to your regional community engagement coordinator. And please save the date for November. Uh, our next town hall will be on Wednesday, November nineteenth at 6:00 PM. We will be hearing from our Director of Academics, sharing very important and helpful information on monitoring your students' progress. Along with that, Mr. Shipman himself will be back. That is a hot ticket alone. Come see, uh, uh, learn even more about the Parent Portal. Uh, Tony Grande will be sharing information about, uh, our MTSS program and our new gifted program. Uh, I will put the link for the sign-in form in the chat one more time so that everyone can complete that. Um, that's also another place where you, if you have ideas for future town halls, topics, workshops, you can also share it through that sign-in form. There is space for you to provide some feedback or ask any additional questions that you might have. So I will put that link in the chat again. I am going to stop the recording of the meeting. Um, and I will hang back if anyone has any final.